All right, everybody, it's six o'clock. We have a quorum. I think Mr. Rivers stepped out, but he'll be back in just a moment, so we'll call this meeting to an end. Mr. Udi, will you lead us in our application tonight?
Father, we come before you this evening with some difficult decisions that has to be made. We now place these burdens before you. Please give us the wisdom to make a decision that will benefit the children that you have blessed us with so gracefully. Father, we pray this in your name, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Mr. Rivers, when you come back, can you lead us in our pledge allegiance book?
Good one, please, your life. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for taking the evening and the public for coming and joining us this evening. Tonight's work session has one purpose, is to receive the final versions of the staff's, of the study that the staff has compiled that we asked for Creedmore Elementary and Wilton Elementary. And so at this time, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chan, good evening to the chair, all our board members, guests, friends, students, and families. Thank you for being here tonight. It was a delight to see all of you. I would just like to open this evening with a brief comment about the studies from which you will hear in just a moment. These studies are the result of a request our board made of staff. They are factual, they are partial, and they include no opinion or judgment. These are not a reflection of mine or the staff's opinion. They're simply a compilation of information. We were asked to research and compile data so that our board could make decisions in the best interest of our community. Again, this is not a recommendation. We thank you in advance for taking time to listen to what our Board of Education will receive this evening. And at this time, I turn it over to our executive team for highlights. Our board received the full document last week and tonight simply about highlights of this study. So Dr. Winborn, I believe you are our first document here.
Well, good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good to see you this evening. Myself and my esteemed colleagues over here on the right are going to go through each of the studies. And Ms. Robinson is going to be displaying them on the screen, but feel free to follow along with the document you have in your folder as well. You'll notice that we have added revisions in blue based on the feedback that we received from you at last meeting and with some email communications that some of you passed along to us as well. So we hope that this provides you with all the information that you need for each of these documents. I'll just start briefly with the table of contents, if you will. Actually, excuse me, back up real quick. The statement on the cover, I think it's also worth noting. This is part of North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(72). This study addresses the welfare of students affected by the proposed closing consolidations under consideration by the Board of Ed. So that is the statute under which this study has been created. So the table of contents, I'm going to just speak briefly, give some information about the historical perspective of the school, school history, enrollment summary, and then we have some information about the legal context for the study in here as well. Ms. Day is going to go over the finance and budgetary considerations. Mr. Jamar Perry is going to talk about human resources. Dr. Meyer is going to discuss curriculum instruction. And then I'll finish us out with infrastructure, operations, school culture, impact on the community, and the final summary. So, history of Creedmore. The current campus was built at its location in 1975, right there in the heart of Creedmore. In 2000, they added a lower grade wing. And then again, in 2005, another two-story classroom was added on. Of course, this is, this property is adjacent to South Bramble and just a short drive down the road from Holly. There are some burial photos on the next pages that show the design of the campus. Just for your reference. All right, and then the next page has the enrollment summary information. This shows the trends of the last 10 years. Back in 2010-11, enrollment was way up, 565. Shortly after that year, right after that year, Tar River Elementary School was built. And of course, all of the attendance zones in the southern part of the district were redrawn. And that caused the enrollment to decline at all of the schools to fill the new school at Tar River. But you can see that over these 10 years, we'll scroll down again some more. There's just a trend chart that just shows generally what's happening to the enrollment over time. Of course, Creedmore does have a choice program. Creedmore was designated a school of the arts in 2014. And that was an effort to help attract students to that school. However, it did not have a dramatic impact on enrollment. Currently, we have a total of 14 students out of 220 that are attending that school. And then you can see the next page, the schools from which those students come in order to attend Creedmore. So the next section discusses the legal factors about this study. Again, the statute is cited there. And if you continue to scroll down, it talks about how the local Board of Education has the sole authority to make these decisions, as Dr. McLean referenced in her opening remarks. There are some required components that must occur, the study itself, and then, of course, a public hearing must occur prior to making a decision about closing or consolidating the school. The study itself should consider a variety of factors. Some of them are listed there. And then you can see other requirements as well that should be considered, including enrollment trends, facility capacity, and geographic conditions. And then there is a little bit of description about the public hearing requirements as well. So then you see that quote right there. "Upon the basis of the study so made, and after such hearing, said Board may, in the exercise of its discretion, approve the closing or consolidation proposed." And then finally, you see those last five bullets are the basis for how this document is organized. Finance and budget, human resources, curriculum instruction, infrastructure, and then finally, school culture and the impact on the community. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Day, who will go through the finance and budgetary considerations. Ms. Day?
Good evening, board members. As Dr. Winborn mentioned, one of the required portions of the study is, by law, is to include the cost of providing any additional school facilities in the event of such closing or consolidation. And based on our current capacity in our southern area elementary schools, there is no anticipated facility cost as the students currently, and Creedmore Elementary Attendance Zone could be accommodated within the neighboring elementary school facilities. Also, as part of this study, we have included the total cost of running the school and potential savings. So included on this page is a summary of that. And I'll reference the document at the end for the, for details, but let's go over this, this chart first. So total current annual cost for Creedmore Elementary School is 4.1 million. Anticipated ongoing costs after consolidation, 3.2 million. Current state funding for the principal, 108,000. And I'll make note about that, that is the only allotment that we receive that is based on the number of schools that we operate. So operating that school, we receive that principal funding, so that's why that is reflected as a part of this calculation. So the potential annual savings, 845,038, which I would make note of the asterisks at the bottom, includes savings for the child nutrition fund of 39,119 dollars. And that is, of course, a separate fund, is accounted for separately. But if you look at the very last page of the document, is Appendix One, and that is more detailed information about, that makes, that supports that table that we just went through. And I'll just make a couple of notes about that. The top portion of that table, of that Appendix One, includes the current personnel cost. And that's based on the staff that are currently there and the benefit, the salary and the benefit rates that are currently in place. So the, that is their total cost, total current personnel cost is 2.8 million. The latter part of, the lower part of the chart includes 19, 20 operating costs, since that was the last full fiscal year that we had to get data from. So those total costs are, of operating, 448,000. What we spend in capital outlay, 833,000. So that gets to that total cost of 4.1 million that was referenced in the table before. And it includes also the ongoing cost, 3.2 million, and then the savings, 805,000, potential savings, 805,000, 39,000 for child nutrition. So the bottom right corner of that chart, 845,038, of potential annual savings from a consolidation. I will also note that a little bit later, Dr. Winborn will be discussing transportation impacts and also capital outlay needs for this school. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Jamar Perry for the HR portion.
I have a quick question for you, sir. You don't need to answer this now, but before we leave, the savings of 845, whatever it is, is, is how much of that is local savings and how much is it related to the state?
So it would be, that saving is based on the, the total cost that we're spending on the school, the cost above and beyond what the state is allocating based on the ADM. So it would, in, it might be, right now being paid out of state or local funds, but it would come from, it would, it would lower the amount of fund balance having to be spent from our local.
But I mean, is the 845, whatever it is, yeah, is that, it would lower the cost, but is the 845 what we would be saving in local funds every year?
Oh, but 39,000 of that, yes, sir. Yes, sir. It would be funds that could be spent on, whether it's local or state, it would be funds that would be at the discretion to be spent on something, another expense or not come from our fund balance. Not be where our expenses are in excess of what our funds being taken in.
We can get into it later. I just wanted to make sure as we went through here.
Yes, but it is the, all but the 39,000.
Good evening, board members. I will spend just a few minutes talking about human resources. NC DPI provides teaching positions based on ADM for the day 20 of the academic school year. And currently, NC DPI provides ADM teacher allotments on a new formula that differs by grade level. And you can notice the table below, kindergarten is an example of teacher student allotment from 1 to 19. HB90, HOP90, just started back in 2017, 18, lowers that class size limit each year. So there's a reduction each year until we get to year 2021, 2022. So they gradually lowers the number of students that are allowed in a classroom. And you can see for grades four through eight that there's no class size limit. Currently, Creedmore Elementary School has 17 classroom teachers for grades K through five. One PE teacher, one music teacher, an art teacher, and a reading teacher. Creedmore is very unique with the fact that they have a professional dance instructor that serves one, serves students one day a week. And that teacher is not a licensed dance instructor, but a professional dance instructor that's not licensed by the state, but by the, through the licensing program with DPI. Moving along, you'll see a list in our table here of our current class size information that's listed at Power School. You notice that actually serves those students that are currently being served virtually. So there's one virtual teacher at each grade level from K through five at Creedmore Elementary School. Staffing for the exceptional children, academically gifted, English language learners per kindergarten are paid using other dollars. So it may be federal funds, other state budget sources, or possible local funds. The school does receive, as Ms. Day mentioned, one principal position for the school. Currently, in system, principal allotment is based on every 985 students in a district. So that is a district allotment, and at times districts have to supplement those positions.
A quick question on these, this, I want to ask you, because you called me when I read it at home. We've got, for instance, in the third grade, we, teacher number three only has 11 students. But our fifth grade, we only had two teachers in the classroom. They have 33 and 34 students. Somehow, this is a real disparity there, that we need another fifth grade teacher. We should probably do away with a third grade teacher.
With the teacher, we have to make sure we maintain those class sizes in grade three so we don't go over, because there is a limit, whereas we have to pop away for grade three. So I do understand your point about the excess in grade five.
Is there, is there a teacher missing there that we're trying to fill, or?
Not at Creedmore in grade five, not currently.
Is 33 and 34, is that, isn't that a fairly excessive number for?
Right now, those students are not all attending at one time.
Understand, but hopefully, we will be attending soon.
Yes.
And if they will be under Plan B, they'll be attending.
We would hope that those numbers will be lower, so that is something we'll take a look at.
Thank you.
Looking at the student counselor, the NC DPI provides one instructional position, support position for every 211 students. That's just as good the principal position, the AP position, too, that's based on the current number of students in the district. So Creedmore Elementary School has one student counselor. There are some other certified staff members at the school. We have a reading teacher who's covered by Title I funds, that is a federal fund source. As well as classified staff, one receptionist, data manager, and a partial, part-time bookkeeper. There are six teacher assistants and three custodians that are currently being served at the school. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Michael Meyer, who will provide information on curriculum and instruction.
Good evening. On page 15, Table 1, you will see a list of students who receive specially designed instruction. I do want to point out with academically intellectually gifted students, the testing was not completely, second battery testing wasn't completed. That normally occurs in the spring, and of course, with students being now in March, we were not able to complete that testing. On page 16, I do want to point out that all of our elementary schools have access to the same core curriculum and assessment resources resulting in consistent content from school to school. Creedmore has continued to improve their academic performance over the past six years, which is evidenced in Table 2. I do also want to note that there was not testing done in last school year. So we do not have scores for that school year. On page 16, as mentioned previously, Creedmore Elementary School is a school of the arts. A school, a school of choice, and their school of choice is a school of the arts. They are a member of the A-plus Schools of North Carolina Network. And according to the A-plus Network's website, A-plus Schools of North Carolina is a whole school transformation model that uses arts as fundamental to teaching and learning. Our schools develop a creative culture in which the state's mandated curriculum is taught through collaboration and multidiscipline integration with the arts continuously woven into every child's learning. Established in North Carolina in 1985, A-plus Schools is a signature program of the North Carolina Arts Council and is the longest-running arts-based whole-school reform model in the nation. And along with being a member of the network, teachers and administrators receive professional development from A-plus Schools of North Carolina. The professional development helps teachers incorporate touches of the arts into their daily lessons. And merging and implementing the choice program at another school, the A-plus Schools program can be replicated or moved to another school. We will now turn it back over to Dr. Winborn.
All right, thank you, Dr. Meyer. Moving right along with infrastructure and operations. Just going over some basic information about the facility itself. It's over 80,000 square feet on almost 20 acres of property. There's a typo here. There are, in fact, seven vacant classrooms at Creedmore Elementary School. And you can see the distance to the surrounding other elementary schools in southern part of the county. I've also listed the available surplus capacity of those schools. So considering those, if Creedmore were to be closed, the remaining four have available surplus capacity of almost 900 students. So the next page has a chart that was included in the OREB study that was done by NC State. This is the IPSEC study, some of you may recall. And it did an analysis of planning and land use and birth rates and so forth. And that they projected a net growth of only 40 additional students during the next 10-year period. I will note that the capacity figures used on this table in 2017, 18 are not the same capacity figures that we're using now as we did some adjustments to that formula. We're now using the optimal capacity figures. As far as capital outlay needs, as you all know, Creedmore has received extensive upgrades in the past two, three years. Of course, in the summer of 2018, the HVAC was completely renovated at a cost of 1.2 million. And that was funded by the county in response to the mold outbreak we had in the summer of 2017. Of course, the school closed. So we just also recently had about 80% of the roof on that campus replaced at a cost of nearly $1 million. Again, through those special funds provided by the county. Looking at our master facility plan, there is more than $1 million of critical capital outlays, outlay needs left in the next five years, so there's still much work that needs to be done. But most of that is miscellaneous, a lot having to do with sort of the substandard windows and doors and locks and bathroom upgrades that need to be done. It's also got some issues with some of the driveway asphalt that need to be resurfaced and repaired. At year five, so in 2025, we've got two chillers that'll be at end of life, and that set costs about $250,000. But overall, the major systems of that campus are now in sound working condition. And it's not in a critical state it was in just a short time ago. And the most recent air quality testing, which we're doing two times a year at all of our buildings across our district, did not show a fungal amplification or an altered indoor fungal ecology, which was very good news. By the way, I'm saying no major mold issues at all. And the humidity readings are where they should be in the 40s to 55, 40s and 50s range. As far as the value of this property.
Dr. Winborn?
Yes, sir.
Have we had an engineer look at that east side wall that they were saying was causing all of the mold and mildy problems on that side? Thinking that when it was originally built, that it's not built structurally correct?
No, sir, we have not. As far as values of your property, the tax appraisal card lists the value at 4.9 billion. It was requested that we try to get a third-party appraisal value. And we looked into that, but the timeline simply did not allow for that to occur. So I don't have any new information to share with you about that, so apologize. That is something that would probably take upwards of three months, maybe a little longer given the pandemic. So it could certainly be done.
Do you remember the cost of the appraisal when we did Joe Doe?
I said several thousand dollars, I believe. You mean the cost of getting, getting the work done?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, yes, I think it was several thousand dollars. Transportation, transportation is a bit of a tricky issue. I've listed some information just about the services for that school prior to the pandemic. We're in an entirely different situation right now when it comes to buses. So looking before, it's last fall, the school had five school buses that were running, and they served approximately 220 students on a regular basis. They traveled 151 miles and were on the road for eight, eight and a half hours or so total per day. Now, if Creedmore were to close, of course, there's multiple scenarios for how these attendance lines could be redrawn. Because of its location, and you can see the attendance zone there, you could reconfigure them really in any number of ways. And what I would recommend that we do is work with ITRA, which is the Institute for Transportation Research and Education at NC State. They provide technical guidance for TIMS, which is the Transportation Information Management System. They're the ones that run, help us run the computer systems for designing our bus routes. They can help optimize new attendance zones. But basically, there is some efficiencies that could be achieved, okay, depending on how you might do this. You can scroll down to page 23, Ms. Robinson. There's two ways you could look at this probably, to put it in simple terms. You could take the Creedmore Attendance Zone, which is the purple one, and you could just kind of split it between Butler and Mount Energy, right? The two adjacent school zones, and just share the children there because there's enough capacity at those schools. Or you could redraw all of them and evenly distribute them amongst the remaining schools in the southern part. And you could also, at that same time, even look at our northern elementary schools, because those were adjusted when we built Tar River as well. Some of our attendance zones, the Butler STEM and the Mount Energy Attendance Zones, reach up into the northern, middle part of our, of our county. So there's, there's some different ways you could look at this. But again, it's, it's too technical for me to speculate on any exact dollar amount here. As far as child nutrition, there are currently four full-time child nutrition staff members. Talking with Ms. Crute, she believes that if the school were closed, the manager position could be eliminated and the three remaining positions would follow the children into the schools that absorb them. So the total estimated savings would be 39,000 for, for that. There's just some tables, some free reduced lunch data there. Those are counts. Those are not percentages. Those are counts. Creedmore, by percentage, usually ranks as one of our higher percentages. All right, and then next, we have school culture and the impact on the community. A lot of this is sort of qualitative information. But obviously, the school does have a proud history and active alumni in the community. It's considered a neighborhood city school for the city of Creedmore. And you also note that there's not a lot of growth projected over the next 10 years for the school. Finally, just to summarize, there are five bullets there, which we believe are Finally, just to summarize, there are five bullets there, which we believe are relatively straightforward. This closure could provide a potential cost savings to the school district, as Ms. Day referenced. It could increase the efficiency of our staffing. It could provide potential increases in academic opportunities for students by making our staffing more efficient. And we could also do it without incurring, with incurring minimal or no cost to our other facilities. Of course, the impact on the school culture and the community would vary. The last page just shows some timeline considerations. These are just for your reference only. These are some dates and months that have been discussed previously by, by the board, so we thought to include them here. So that concludes the presentation of the Creemore study.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
Maybe for Mr. Berry. On page fifteen, it's talking about classified. Is it that Creemore has two custodians or three custodians? Because in words, it says two, in numbers, it says three.
Yes, we got three.
Three, okay.
Yes, sir. That's another typo. Thank you for catching that.
Dr. Winmore?
Yes, sir.
What's not mentioned today, but I think is pertinent, is what would we do if, let's say we elect to close Creemore? What are we going to do with the building?
I think that's probably a discussion question for the board, not the staff. We're trying to make sure that they're staying out of the fray of, of that type of discussion. So when we get past the second one, I would think that would be part of the discussion.
Any other questions? If not, we will move on in alphabetical order to the second study, Wilton Elementary School. Again, it has the exact same format in its presentation, basically the same table of There's some wonderful history about the school, a nice photograph of the original Definitely, you can tell that it has been a fixture of that community for quite a long period of time. In nineteen eighty-five, the current campus was built, and it began with three hundred and forty-five students. There was an addition that was added in nineteen ninety-one, and then again in nineteen ninety-seven, and then in two thousand and five, the cafeteria was expanded and additional renovations were made. So it's had three additional construction events since it was built. The enrollment summary, again, you can see that in the two thousand ten, eleven year, just after that Tar River was built, and so you saw the big change in enrollment. I will note that in two thousand ten, eleven, that school was way over capacity and had many students housed in mobile units, which is one reason for the effort to try to add another elementary school at a time. And then you can see the bar graph sort of shows a steady enrollment period with recently a gradual decline. Currently, there are two hundred and sixty or sixty-one students, depending on the snapshot or you look. About a hundred of those are students attending Wilton by choice. And you can see the schools from which those students attend. All right, and again, the legal factors, I won't go through those again, they are the same. With that, I will bring it back to Ms. Day and discuss the financial considerations for Wilton.
Now, John, before you go, a question.
Yes, sir.
Is forty-three students who Tar River who attend Wilton, you know, two schools are only a little more than half a mile apart.
Yes, sir.
Is, what's the reason for that?
Um, I, I couldn't say. I've not researched that. I imagine it's for the choice, the choice program, so perhaps it's the Leader in Me program, but I would be speculative on that part.
That's just interesting, you mean, they're next door to each other, one's a brand-new school, so just, just to point one out.
Yes, sir. Mr. Day?
Again, the, the portion that is required to be in the study, that's legally required to be in the study, is whether there will be additional costs associated with the consolidation or closing, and there are no anticipated facility costs as the students currently in the Wilton Elementary Attendance Zone could be accommodated within the neighboring schools. There also, there are not anticipated transportation costs, and Dr. Winmore is going to be speaking of that a little bit later. At the bottom of this page, page ten, the existing costs and potential savings, again, this includes the total current cost for Wilton, the anticipated ongoing cost after consolidation. So total current annual cost, two point four million, anticipated ongoing cost after consolidation, one point six million, the current state funding for the principal, one hundred and seventeen thousand, so for potential annual savings, a seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, six ninety-nine. And I got what I add to that is that our state and local funds really work hand in glove for our operating, so of that seven thirty-four, forty-five thousand is child nutrition. So the six hundred and eighty-nine thousand is savings in our operating fund. So the only funding source, as far as a state funding source, that we would not have of that funding source anymore because of the closing of the school, is that principal reduction. So all of the other, if, if it was a savings, it would be a savings for our operating budget, whether it was state money or local money, it would be for our general operating budget.
Mr. Chairman, is, should we, is it okay to ask questions about specific things before we get into the conversation, or should we wait?
I think specific to this particular study, if it's not repeated.
Okay. I, I'm not clear, and I apologize for that. So, because what I want to get at is the bottom line, if we close the school, what will we save in local funding? And I, I hear you say that it's kind of mixed together, and so I'm not, I'm not clear.
Right.
Can you go a little bit further into this?
Yeah, so if you don't, let, let's turn to that last page, that appendix one. Again, the first part of this is the personnel, our, the current personnel, that includes salaries and benefits. And let me walk you through a couple of these columns. The first column is the total current positions. The next column is the amount provided by the state or grant based on the A D M or school. And then the, the next column is the additional cost. So when I say, when this column says provided by state grant based on the A D M, that's how much is earned of state money based on the A D M. So then the additional cost is the additional cost of those items above and beyond the amount that is provided by the state based on the A D M. So then, coming over the column is the total current cost. But I think that's important to, to note, to understand, the additional funds that go into the school above and beyond the amount that is earned based on the A D M. And that may be state and that may be local dollars, but the, the total savings that we, this, this study has been, I prepared the financial side, the same as we've done in the prior, with the prior studies. And those particular studies, the savings from those schools in that situation was a reduction in the amount of fund balance we had to appropriate out of local dollars. So because it all works hand in glove, saving local dollars, it ultimately was a savings for our local, our local fund.
So just take a little bit further. All right, so I understand that the principal, that's a wash, because, you know, we get so and so forth. The assistant principal, is that, is, that's a state allotment of money for assistant principal. I mean, so the decision would then be made, do...
Yeah, let me piggyback on that. So the assistant principal position is, we get allotted an assistant principal position for a certain number of students. So that's what, that sixteen thousand, six fifty-five is based on the number of students that, that Wilton has, that's how much the dollars of a assistant principal that the state allot to us. So the difference in the cost is the seventy-four thousand, three seventeen. So if this, looking at the savings of this position, we have assistant principals above and beyond the state funding. So any savings with an assistant principal position, we would be able to use district-wide for assistant principal positions. So the state and local funds work so hand in glove, but it would, it would ultimately be a savings for our local fund. So again, the top, the first part of the chart is the personnel, that's based on our current personnel that are in the school and our current salary benefit rates. The bottom portion is based on the nineteen-twenty operating cost. So the total current cost, two point four million, the ongoing cost, one point six million, so the potential consolidation savings, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand plus the forty-five thousand of child nutrition, so a total savings, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, six ninety-nine. Again, of that, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand is for our operating budget, would be savings associated with our operating budget. And I will note again, Dr. Winmore will be speaking to transportation and capital outlay needs. I'll turn it over to Ms. Fair.
For human resources at Wilton Elementary School, there's a total of seventeen teachers, fifteen classroom teachers, that covers grades K through five, one P teacher and one reading teacher. The reading teacher position is paid through federal funds. At the bottom of page twelve, you'll notice our current class sizes. There are two teachers that are dedicated to virtual academic elementary school. Through the four, there's one principal position, one assistant principal position, one school council position, and then there are non-certified school-based classified staff, center of receptions, which is one position, which is a reception slash bookkeeper. Then we have one data manager slash receptionist, two custodians, five teacher assistants, four who are assigned to classrooms, and one who is assigned to the meeting center. Dr. Winmore?
On page fifteen, you will see table one, and table one shows our students who receive specially-designed services, academic and intellectual gift. Again, the secondary tests were not completed in the spring. At the bottom of page fifteen, all G C P S elementary schools have access to the same core curriculum and assessment resources, resources resulting in consistent content from school to school. Wilton, on page sixteen, Wilton has continued to improve academic performance over the past six years, as evidenced in the data found in table two. And again, I just want to point out that students were not tested in the spring. On page seventeen, as previously mentioned, Wilton is a school of choice. Their school of choice is Leader in Me, and according to the Leader in Me website, Leader in Me is an evidence-based, comprehensive school improvement model developed in partnership with educators that empower students with the leadership and life skills they need to thrive in the twenty-first century. The framework provides a unique approach to integrating highly effective practices throughout a school's culture. Instead of focusing on academic measures alone, Leader in Me embodies a holistic approach to education, redefining how schools measure success. This approach empowers educators with effective practices and tools to teach leadership to every student, create a cultural student empowerment, and align systems to drive results in academics. Teachers receive Leader in Me coaching from the organization. The coaching helps teachers incorporate the seven leadership principles into their daily lessons. And the Leader in Me program can be merged slash implemented at another school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mark. All right, moving along with infrastructure and operations. As far as facilities, Wilton is the smallest of our school facilities, has forty-eight thousand square feet of indoor space and just over eighteen acres. Currently, there are four vacant classrooms at Wilton Elementary School. You'll note here the distance between the two closest existing elementary schools, Tar River is point eight miles away, and Mount Energy is four point one miles down the road. If Wilton were closed, there is more than enough available capacity at Tar River and Mount Energy to absorb them, over five hundred, based on optimal capacity. Again, also included the information from O R E D, from the Ipsack Study, and it shows that there's a net growth in the next ten years of only two additional students, based on their analysis of growth trends in that part of the county. As far as capital outlay needs, Wilton campus currently has more than two point seven million in needs, critical capital needs in the next five years. The largest of this is a roof replacement, which is due next year, and almost three-quarters of a million dollars for H V A C projects in the building. Currently, both those are right at end-of-life and need to be addressed. The most recent air quality testing did show that overall, there was not a altered indoor fungal ecology on the campus. However, there were some elevated levels of humidity and some altered samples in specific parts of the school, which have been addressed. Humidity levels in the school do continue to be above rates that are higher than the optimal levels. We need to address some maintenance and resurfacing projects for the driveway and the parking area. There's also an abandoned underground oil tank that needs to be mitigated as well. The value of the property, again, according to the tax appraisal card, posted by the county, is eight point six million. And again, unable to provide any third-party information on that.
Dr. Winmore?
Yes, sir.
When they ran that water line, did that go away with the water tank there? Because at one time, they were having to empty that tank every morning and refill it because of the bacteria in the water. And I know that a water line has been run to Wilton from Creemore, did that cover that problem?
I, I know of no current issues with the water quality at the school. Transportation, prior to the pandemic, Wilton ran three school buses, served about a hundred students, and they traveled over a hundred and sixty-two miles per day, just under eight Possible savings or efficiencies with closure of Wilton with regard to transportation could be a little bit more straightforward, since you have two schools that are right next to it. In consultation with our transportation director, we believe that, you know, you could make the routes more efficient and remove at least one bus from the fleet. So that would be an average savings of around twenty-five thousand dollars a year, depending on ridership and routes. Some of those are, would be difficult to calculate now, because we would not be certain where all these choice students may decide to, to go themselves. So there is a potential cost savings merely because of the proximity of the two schools. And again, we would want to consult with ITR on that in order to, you know, determine And again, we would want to consult with Getre on that in order to determine how these attendance lines may be redrawn. Child nutrition, again, it's been determined that if Wilton were closed, the manager and one part-time physician could be eliminated. And then the remaining two positions would simply follow the children to the schools where they were reassigned or decided to go with a choice program. That estimated savings is forty-five thousand dollars. Free and reduced lunch data is there also, and of course, these are counts, student counts, All right, school culture, the impact on the community. Wilton Elementary has received numerous awards for their choice program. They've been recognized nationally. And of course, this program, as Dr. Meyer mentioned, helps boost youth leadership development through the Stephen and Franklin Tubby Association Organization. So, again, it would be difficult for me to speculate on the overall impact of the culture on the community. But to summarize here on the last bottom part of page twenty-five, we can say that the closure may accomplish the following, provide a potential annual recurring cost savings to the school district. It could certainly increase efficiency of staffing, which then may provide potential increases to academic opportunity for our students. And it would incur minimal or no cost related to our facilities and potentially provide additional funds for capital outlay from the sale of such property. And the impact on the culture and the community, of course, would be varied. And again, the same timeline is presented as was in the other study. Can we leave this on the presentation?
Are there any technical questions or clarifying questions for the executive staff before we move on to the facilitator portion? Yes, sir.
Hi, Ed Tu. You mentioned the Ipsac study, and you talked about Wilton in the next ten years was anticipated to grow by two students, Creedmore by forty students. What do you, how, what's the pedigree of that data? I mean, we're hearing all kinds of different numbers depending on SEWASSA and everything else.
Yes, sir.
What is your, what is your feeling? Is that, that's basically assuming no more development or very little development, and we don't know yet where SEWASSA is coming out and all this. But do you, do you think those are good numbers?
Well, I do know that the study was completed right up to, over two years ago. So, that would need to be taken into consideration in looking at these. I know that SEWASSA has come before us and has presented general information about growth and development.
They don't want to put specific things in.
And I think, you know, there are a lot of unknowns about their funding, their strategic plan. So, you know, I, this was created by the third-party reputable organization of NC State. I have a reason to question it. I think the fact that it is almost two years old may be something to consider.
My second question, and I appreciate that, but yeah, SEWASSA has not been very specific with us, so it's been very difficult to get a handle on that. Looking at the, at the number of exceptional children and children that with learning challenges such as English learners and the like, I did a rough calculation. Creedmore Elementary has about, roughly about a third of their student population suffered challenges. Wilton has about, percentage about sixteen, eighteen percent. So, they're about half of that percentage. The two schools are a B and D school. On the, this may be for Dr. Meyer, on the, what impact on the relative grade, the school grades, would you see, would you say the increase in English learners and exceptional children, say those that do test? And they have two brackets at Creedmore and one at Wilton. How can we get a feeling on that as far as if Creedmore had similar challenges, would they be a C or a D school? I mean, if Wilton had more, you know, how does that, how's that going to affect? We do know that the state does test many of our exceptional children, and that they do have a difficult time doing well on the tests. So, can you give me a feel for that?
That's a very difficult question. I will defer to Dr. Meyer on it, but I know that testing outcomes, academic outcomes for students are impacted by a wide variety of factors. So, I don't know that there's necessarily a way to tease that out looking at student population, but Dr. Meyer?
No, you're exactly, you're exactly correct. There's really no way to take that data into consideration because there are several different factors that could play into any school at any given time. Because that test, you have to remember, is given at one point in time, one moment in time that ended up in your test.
Well, Wilton has consistently been a B-rated school, and Creedmore consistently a D-rated school, and they've consistently had that disparity in children with challenges. It seems to me we should be able to pull out the test scores of those children that do have the challenges that we know is going to make it difficult for them to excel on these tests and kind of get an apples-to-apples comparison. I mean, I will guess, my gut is telling me that if you had the same number of exceptional children in both schools and the same number of English learners, that Creedmore might be more like a C school and Wilton might be more like a C school. I mean, they would, Wilton would probably come down because they would have children that have challenges that are not going to allow them to do as well. And Creedmore would have fewer children with challenges who are not doing as well. So, it's, I'm trying to get an idea of the core schools, where they compare. So, we can't, we can't do that?
I can't answer that question.
We've talked about this before. I mean, it's.
Yes, we have. And just as I've said before, and just looking at this data and the data of any of our schools, it just depends on a couple of factors. One, it can be teaching styles. It can be the child's home conditions. It could be any number of factors that play into how well a child does, the type of learning the student had before they got into school, you know. So, we really can't pinpoint just one single thing that could be the determining factor factored into that. Because one thing we don't want to do is to talk about a set of children, you know, looking at a set of children that may have some academic challenges that's beyond their control. And another piece we have to also look at is how the student is growing. That's why sometimes it's very hard to determine by just looking at the single year, single grade performance of a student. Have to kind of look at that student over time from when they come into school from kindergarten, how they grew from kindergarten to first grade, the second grade, and third grade. So, it's very difficult to determine. I'm not saying that it can't be done, but I don't have that information in front of me now that I'll be able to do that. And I don't even know with all of the outside factors that will factor into it, that it still would be a valid answer that I could give.
Well, that's bothered me for a long time. My children went to West Oxford, which has always been a D-rated school. And I think they got a very good education. West Oxford has a large population of exceptional children and English learners. And it was always my opinion that as a parent, trying to look at where you put your child. Wilton is the highest rated school in our elementary school in our district. I don't think as a parent, you could necessarily say it's the best school because other schools have more challenges that affect it. So, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. You know, it's been consistently B for Wilton, consistently D for Creedmore. But I think, I think we're going to have to allow parents to be more comfortable staying in our district rather than going to charter somewhere to understand that there are reasons why certain schools have lower report card, you know, school report card grades. And it's just unfortunate that we can't somehow, as you say, tease that out to more accurately compare the two schools if you kind of get where I'm going. But I guess we just can't tonight, but that to me is unfortunate because that's a data point that I would really like to know.
I think that really comes into one of the things we're going to talk about in just a few moments.
Okay.
Facilitations.
Thank you.
I just have a question for Dr. Meyer. Do you have the percentage of growth for each school? I know we got the letter grade, but do you have the percentage of growth?
Other than what's on here, if you looked on page four, the Wilton study, it's on page sixteen. And I'm sorry, on the Creedmore study, it's on page sixteen. And it's on page, it should be on page sixteen in the Wilton study as well.
I'm missing, where is it located?
Growth is located in.
Eva.
One, two, three, the fourth chart from the, from the chart.
Okay, thank you. I just missed that call.
I have one question. I think this is maybe for Ms. Day. The choice program reoccurring cost, is that on the spreadsheet? Like, which line would that be on the spreadsheet?
So, it's included in the narrative, the amount of the choice program. For Creedmore, there is not a cost.
Right.
And for Wilton.
That's the eighty-five hundred fee, and then there's thirty-five hundred for each coaching day? I guess I'm just trying to figure out how many coaching days have they had? Total reoccurring?
So, it's included, the eighty-five hundred dollars include one day of coaching.
Okay.
Any additional days of coaching is thirty-five hundred dollars.
Ms. Day, wouldn't the dance instructor be a cost, a choice cost like Dr. Knight's talking about?
Right.
Since the school of the arts and other schools don't have dance instructors?
Yes, you're correct. You're correct.
Thank you.
So, that would be.
All right.
Thank you.
Board, at the request of you, I asked Dr. McLean to reach out to Dr. Angela Quick of RTI, who's previously helped us on several occasions by facilitating meetings. Dr. Quick was unable to be here this evening due to the quick turnaround of our request and a previously scheduled commitment. In thinking through who might come and help us facilitate our discussion tonight, I landed on the idea of asking Ms. Michelle Robinson to handle this task tonight. As you know, Ms. Robinson is our district's Director of Professional Development. The role of facilitators to be a neutral party and assist the board to see information through an objective lens. Her job tonight is to help us capture information as it relates to the two studies that will be presented and how it may affect other areas we are currently working on while allowing members of the board to freely share their thoughts and questions. While she works with both schools that are the subject of these studies through her role of elementary director, she is here to walk us through the process tonight, not influence the decisions that may or may not come out of our work tonight. So, while we begin our work tonight, we need to establish some roles and responsibilities for each party. Already, the superintendent and the executive team have presented the studies and answered the questions that you have. Ms. Robinson, our facilitator, will help us work through the process of receiving the studies and establishing what we will do with the information we will receive from these studies. And as the board, we should listen to the studies, seek to understand all the facets of information, and to participate as Ms. Robinson leads us through the process tonight. Part of the reason I have stepped away from the front is to allow all board members the opportunity to work through this process as a cohesive group and not to recognize the roles of our board. And so, I'd like to invite Ms. Robinson to come now to lead us through our activity tonight.
Good evening, board members. Ms. Angela Perry is going to help us tonight as well, and we intend this to be a very interactive opportunity. As Ms. Richardson mentioned, my role tonight is to move you through a process, to take you through a thinking process about what you've heard, and you are doing the conversation around that. So, we, you've heard the studies, you've heard from the executive team, you've had the chance to read the studies. So, you've got the information. So, what we want to do now is move through the process that helps us think about that information in light of two things that you'll see up here on the board. One are driving forces and restraining forces. So, as we, in any situation that you find yourself needing to make a decision or to make a change or to achieve an outcome, there are factors that drive you toward that decision, and there are factors that restrain that decision. So, we're going to use that process tonight of moving through the information that you've heard. Of what you've heard, what are the factors that drive you toward a decision? And what are the factors that restrain you from a decision? So, we will go through just as we did, starting one school at a time, starting in alphabetical order. So, if we can just get started really quickly, we are going to ask that you are active participants in this. So, we're going to bring you some post-it notes and some markers, and we'll ask you to share your thinking that way. So, if you give us just a second to get going. So, we will start by looking at the study around Creedmore Elementary. And the topic of that study was the closure of Creedmore Elementary. So, that's our topic of discussion. If our decision is the closure of Creedmore Elementary, let's start by thinking about driving forces. So, using your orange post-it notes and thinking about what you've heard and read around Creedmore Elementary, what are the driving forces that are moving you toward a decision of closure of Creedmore Elementary? Okay? We'll give you a minute to do some thinking, and then we'll share that together. What are the, what are the ideas for post-it? When you're ready, go. Just hold them up. So, some of the ideas that are emerging around driving forces toward the closure of Creedmore, there are some recurring patterns around cost and cost savings. There were ideas around lower ADM, the lack of funding, that there were only fourteen. Ready? Choice students, the cost of repairs. There are lots of themes around the idea of funding. Would you like to elaborate? Any, anybody would like to elaborate on some of your thinking around what you added? Or any new ideas, any additional ideas that haven't come up? School of the arts can be replicated in another location. Vacant classrooms, cost of repairs, sell the property, grades, number of students. Vacant classrooms, cost of repairs, sell the property, grades, number of students. Any other ideas that haven't come out yet? Well, we're going, this is not the end of it, we can continue to add as we go. So if we look on the other side of that decision, if the topic at hand is closure of Creedmore, using your yellow post-its, what are the restrainers? What are the things that are slowing down, or the things that are restraining you from a decision of closing Creedmore? Thinking on the other side of the equation this time. Ms. Berry, what are some of the things that are emerging so far? It's a neighborhood school for the city of Creedmore, millions of dollars already spent on infrastructure, funds already invested in repairs. Community impact, only elementary school in the city limits. The projection of forty new students in the next ten years. Lots of pattern around location within Creedmore. The lower tax value of that particular school, inner-city school. Lots of, lots of pattern around where it is, it's the only school in that area, it's a community school. Location, only fourteen students out of the district, so that's kind of the community school idea. Neighborhood school. We don't have a master plan for southern-area schools, and this decision seems haphazardly Local community school. And opportunities that will be there through a restart program. That is another factor to consider, is that Creedmore is one of our restart schools. Or growth is increasing, meaning academic performance growth. Okay? And there are three schools in close proximity, including Elementary Middle High. Okay? So one of the things that's interesting about this process, that we're going to take some liberty with this process a little bit, is as we're thinking, and as you're sort of processing the information that you've heard, the idea that we're exploring explicitly is the idea that was presented in the study. As a group, you might determine that there are other ideas, and we will certainly capture those as we go, so don't feel like you can't add new thinking to it as you go. The other thing that I would encourage you to keep an eye toward as we go through this process with the next school, is what's starting to emerge as the criteria for the decision-making? When you think about what generated so far, what's emerging as the criteria for the decision? That's just sort of jumping off at this point. Funding, whatever.
Location.
Location.
Enrollment.
Enrollment. What else?
Proximity to other schools.
Proximity to other schools.
Choice program.
Choice program. Right? So these are student performance, I think you talked about that. So part of an outcome of tonight is, or can be, as this decision is being made, what are the reasons? What are the criteria that are driving the decision? So that we're all able to articulate those reasons. Anything that you'd like to add to the thinking around Creedmore Elementary? Any additional ideas, things that resonate with you? Again, not closing the door, we'll keep that path open, she's going to need it for that. Okay. Any questions about the process? Sort of how it works? All right, then we're going to switch here and look at study two. Okay? So the topic of study two was the closure of Wilton Elementary. Back to your orange, what are the factors that are driving toward a decision of closure of Wilton Elementary? These might be factors that are internal to the, to the origin, to the district, through external to the district, specific to the school. So we're seeing some patterns around, again, cost, tax value, ADM. So some of the, again, patterns that are emerging around some of these drivers, lots of examples around cost, including the value of property, the tax value, transportation savings, potential annual savings, several ideas around numbers of students, ADM is lowering, low projections of students, proximity to other schools. Again, location seems to be coming back again and again. Leader in me could be replicated in other places, this one says, and might help their letter grade too. Lack of socioeconomics that influence other schools, letter grades. Potential income if the property was still. And there are several ideas around the impending capital cost of that particular building. Any other ideas that you'd like to add to the conversation? Cost of the choice program. All right, again, door doesn't close, we'll keep having the conversation, but now let's go on the other side of the conversation. When we think about the topic of the closure of Wilton, what are the restraining forces against that decision? What are, what's restraining that decision? So some of the ideas that are emerging so far are student performance, high levels of student performance, academic performance, the strong alumni base and parent base of the school, the value of the property as a district asset. There are times when a factor can be both a driver and a restrainer. The growth rate, small school, top performing, WAPL is another small school. So this actually can come up here as, yeah, the size, thinking about the size. Cost of repairs, the tax value of the school, and the noteworthyness of the choice program that they have been recognized. Did you say that one? Yes. There are some questions also that have emerged that may be a conversation. Would we lose students to charter? And would grades show we need the classrooms? Any other ideas? The potential annual savings is less savings than that compared to Creedmore. And the leader in the program, that a hundred students have chosen Wilton, that's what, right. Other ideas? Thoughts? Any other factors to consider around what you learned about Wilton? Or Creedmore? You started to let some of the ideas float here, right? Is there anything that's missing? When you think about the factors that are driving decision-making?
So I have kind of a question.
Okay.
So the board received an email over the weekend talking about a survey of parents talking about the charter school thing. Was that a school survey, or was that a district survey? Do we know?
Nothing sent out by the district.
Okay, I was just curious about that.
Any other considerations? When you think about these being the reasons for the decision? Are there any other reasons for the decision?
I'd throw in an idea. The struggle that I'm having with closing one of these schools is that, to me, we have not put together a plan, a master plan, we have not addressed where Holly fits into all of this, if it does. And that's my struggle, you know, if the board decides to do something, you know, fine. But in making a decision of this magnitude, and for these students, and future, and everybody else, it just is a concern about, do we do this and forget about Holly? Or do we do somebody else and just let Holly roll? I mean, I think for me, we need to, as a board, present something very clear to our commissioners about what we need, when we need it, and how all of this goes together. And I think too that it bothers me that, well, anyway, to me, that's the elephant in the room. Where does Holly fit into this? Anywhere. And if we make a decision like that, how would it impact what happens to all kids in this part of the county?
I'd add on, Dr. Willing just said, I agree with you, Tom. The Ops Committee came out on October 5th, and we said, in our opinion, Dr. Weber, Mr. Union, myself, in our opinion, we had to make a decision on Holly before we could close the southern schools, simply because one of the options in the Holly study was moving sixth graders into some of the elementary schools. Now, we have, when I added up, about nine hundred extra student capacity in our schools. So if we close a school, we're going to have six hundred capacity, if we send sixth graders, we're talking a hundred and sixty. So we're still going to have capacity to send sixth graders to the remaining elementary schools. However, I think it's still important that we figure out what's going on with Holly. The problem is, we're running out of time. I mean, if we don't close the school this year, then we have another $2.7 million of deficit money we don't have for next year's budget. I agree, we're in a mess right now. And, you know, somehow we've got at least, perhaps we can at least agree that we would not send any sixth graders from Holly to other elementary schools. If we can agree to that, take that option off the table, then the Holly decision would not necessarily impact closing the southern elementary school. So I agree with you. We have a general lack of a plan in the South that, and I think we can take care of it, but, you know, we need to, we need to decide if that option of sending sixth graders to our elementary schools, or keeping fifth graders rising to sixth graders in their elementary schools, if that's an option. I think we can still do it, but I think we need to clean it up and make a decision.
Well, I would like to say this to my fellow board members, just something to think about, because I'm trying to think outside the box on this. So I do feel like maybe this is being rushed along, and we need to pump the brakes on it a little bit. There are a few unknown variables that we have to consider. This is a census year, so it would be nice if we had new census data, which comes out next year in the spring, so we'll have that data. It's also an election year. We may be dealing with a new administration, a new federal education, we don't know how the money flows behind whoever becomes the next administration in power. So that's another variable that maybe we need to sit and hope and see what happens, because money could flow down. Earlier this week. Earlier this week, we had the opportunity to meet with the USDA Rural Economic Development, and they gave us a grant of $680,000. And one of the things that, when we started looking into it, is that they fund different projects. They fund building. We have to have some partners in this and talk to these people out here, because they have funding to help us with some of these issues that we're looking at. Now, here's a possible solution that I thought of that I think is a win-win, could be. It does require kicking the can just a little bit. But I would really like to see, because I read a lot of emails and letters from parents of Wilton, and they really tout the Leader in Me program. And I looked into it and really explored it. It's a great program. Why stop at fifth grade? Wilton has the capacity. Why not go K-8 and have a middle school Leader in Me program and let those kids just continue? The other option we could also explore is also pulling those sixth graders down into the elementary school. That helps relieve some of the capacity at Holly as a temporary stopgap until we can aggressively pursue maybe some partners to help us renovate Holly. Now, for those who are listening, I am not in favor of closing Holly by no means, but it needs repairs. And the grander vision that I have to see with Holly is something similar to what happened in Wayne County with Southeast Elementary, where they partnered with the YUCA or some other partner. So maybe we can find someone, aggressively go after someone or talk to the USDA Rural Economic Development Group to see if we can get some money to help refurbish Holly and at the same time grow our other programs. Now, I think Leader in Me program is awesome. It would require a little bit of money to maybe do that, to do the reoccurring cost, but it's such a great program, why stop at fifth? So that's just a thought right there. If we could do that, that expands their capacity over there. We put kids in Wilton. We pull sixth graders down to the elementary school. That bumps up all the elementary capacity. It also reduces the capacity at Holly while we are chasing down renovation dollars.
I want to pick up on that with a little bit of a version, but I agree with you about the idea, excuse me? About the idea of making the elementary schools fit into Holly K-6. That would lead grades seven and eight at Holly. I would feel much more comfortable being able to have that number of kids in newer buildings as opposed to some of the older ones for safety and so on and so forth. And the K-6 put more kids into it. And don't forget, if we keep those kids another year, maybe that will have an impact on how many of our kids flee from charters. We don't know if that would, but we clearly know when we closed Holly, a number of those kids, if I understand it correct, eventually wound up at a charter school. And frankly, you can understand why, but, so. And here's the other thing that I think we're missing. We have, the highest performing schools in our system are low, are small. Are small schools and are the highest performing. We've closed one. If we close Wilton, for example, we close two. And then what about the early college? Actually, it's smaller than Wilton. So my point is to get into, you know, academic performance and all of that is so important. Creedmore is at a different place, but if you look at their demographics, they're really trying hard to go somewhere. How do you break those things down right now? And how do we allow? How do we keep pressure on the commissioners to make a decision about what you're going to do? And if we don't get a decision, that's a decision in itself. But how can we take the last historically black school in Bramble County in the worst shape facility-wise and just let it sit there? And somebody at the county level needs to tell us why we cannot do it. When we had the issue of mold and the TV and all that stuff all over the county, pop, $15 million real quick. Came from somewhere. And we had heard forever, we don't have any money. And, you know, that's kind of the way it works everywhere. But, you know, we just cannot accept not pushing hard to get somebody to deal with Holly. That school is going to remain open. We all have said so. And that isn't an issue. The issue is, we got to get that building, that facility up to speed and not allow it to just continue to deteriorate. But having two grades keeps the school viable. It helps, it helps put the kids in places and position where we don't have to worry about some of that stuff. Yet keep it going, keep it open. And at some point, sooner rather than later, we need a decision. It's our job legally, and I'm almost there. It's our job legally to present to the commissioners our needs. It's their job legally to find a way or to make a decision. We have to forcefully go to them and say, we have to have something done. If we don't, it ain't going to happen.
So can I push back on that just a little bit?
No, you can't. I was on the roll.
I think you're exactly right, but I think also on some of it, I think we've got to make a decision. They're expecting us to make some decisions as well to affect it. Commissioner Cozart said that in our last layoff meeting. You decide what you want to do and then let's come back and talk. We've been all over the gamut for the last two years of what we're going to do down here. And so how can they, I mean, playing the advocate for them at the moment is, how can they say yes to anything if we don't even know what we're saying? So maybe if we take this and we push the pause button, we really put our heads together on some outside of the box solutions and then present it to them and go, okay, here's our plan, and I'll figure out how to make it work.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I know you and I have had conversations about how far to push them, but I think they kind of got a point of if we seven county can come up with what we want to do. Because I've been asked by at least three board members this week of, why are we talking about this? Like trying to get the board up to date on why we're on this subject. So maybe we all need to be in agreement before we move forward.
And Mr. Richardson, what do you mean by be in agreement?
Just in the fact of, we talked about closing a southern elementary school and looking at Holly. Well, then we split it apart because we felt like that was a good decision. Then we had, just different options kept coming up. We didn't have a singular thing to look at.
Are you talking about it, Holly?
Just all of it. I mean, originally, all of this was smooshed together. And so, and the fact that we're even here tonight looking at studies and don't even have in our head what the criteria is to close a school. I mean, that's something far different than where we are. I mean, Joe Tolter, we were pretty specific of what we were looking at.
Mr. Chairman, this board sometime ago decided that we were going to renovate Holly.
That we're going to what?
Renovate, which means tearing down part and building that part and this sort of thing. As far as I'm concerned, that's still on the table. The question is, how do we go about doing it? And that's really the question from where I sit. So I don't necessarily see that having to deal with what we're talking about. We're talking about closing the schools. Now, I mean, it could if we decided. It depends on what we decide, but I don't want Holly to be sidetracked or turn away with that result of trying to do something different. And, you know, well, I think everybody around this table knows what that would do to the community. And I think we all have the benefit of knowing that it's not going to be a good deal to do that. So the idea of that moving sixth grade to other schools. So, you know, does that mean we don't close the villages? If we do, how do you handle it?
My dilemma the whole time has been, why are we even considering closing a school? And I've been getting several different answers to that question. One answer that I have gotten is because we promised that we would close the southern school and we have to fulfill that promise. A second answer I have gotten is because we need the money and we need funding. The third answer that I have gotten is that our schools are not full and we need to find a way to fill the vacant classrooms. So in my mind, I need to figure out why the discussion is to close a school. Is it to save money? Is it to redistribute students? Is it because we have to fulfill a promise? So in my mind, we have to decide the reason that we even want to consider closing the school. And that's what I'm confused about. I want to see if anybody can share some insight to help me answer that question. I think we need to determine the reason that we're even here considering this right now.
Here's my take on what you all said. We were $2.6 million short in our budget this past spring. Took 60% cuts to our programs. We couldn't hire instructional coaches. We desperately needed numbers. We couldn't hire all the social workers we desperately needed. Couldn't give our teachers any extra local subsidy. We need money. We've got seven and a half million dollars of critical infrastructure needs and we have no money, zero dollars. We have $10 million in the next, was it five years, Dan, that we got to come up with? You're saying yes. $10 million in the next five years, and we don't have it. We have zero. The county is behind on the law enforcement center. We have a pandemic and we've had economic damage to our community. So the chance of a tax increase is nonexistent. I don't see us getting any more revenue from the county. Bear in mind, Bramble County ranks right now as the seventh highest county in North Carolina for giving money to the school district based on its ability to give money to the school district. So going to the county commissioner saying, give us more money, give us more money, they're doing pretty darn well if they're seventh highest ranked in the state of North Carolina. So I think trying to get more money out of county is going to be difficult. And I agree, closing a school is the last thing in the world I want to do. The good news is, the charters are at capacity. I don't think we're going to see the loss of charter schools that we have seen in the past eight years. We are going to see more and more kids going homeschooling. And I'm hearing a lot of parents calling me right now telling me they're going to start homeschooling because they don't like remote learning. I look at it as aviation is a term called a graveyard spiral. And that's going to get in situations and instrument conditions and you just keep going around and spiraling till you hit the ground. And I think, and I hate to say it, but I think we're in that position now. I think we've waited too long and we're going to have to take drastic measures. We need money and we can't get money unless we give more students. We can't get more students unless we improve our performance. We can't improve our performance unless we get more money. So we've got finance, performance, ADM, and all three are fighting against each other. And we're going to keep losing students. We're going to keep losing money. And we're going to keep declining in performance because we can't give the district administration the money they need. We've got to do something dramatic. We've got to take some action. And part of the problem, in my opinion, with the board is the board, and I don't blame the board, the board is reluctant to make hard decisions. The board has been reluctant to make hard decisions since I've lived here for the past 13 years. We don't have an easy way out. There is no panacea. The only thing we can do is painful and it's going to be uncomfortable. The only thing we are committed on is, I think everyone here is 100% committed to saving Holly. We're agreed with that. But the old structure of Holly is beyond saving. That's going to have to go and the new part of Holly can be saved. We can't just renovate. We got to get a lot of money to fix that. And I like your idea, Dr. McKnight, about trying to use USDA involvement. And maybe we can come up with some way to do that. But if we kick the can down the road, we got to do something to get more money somehow. And we got 2,000 more seats than we have students to fill. That means $18 million that we're not giving in state and local money because of that 2,000 student deficit. $18 million. Our budget is $18 million less than it was eight years ago. You know, we are, we are in very serious straits. I'm very, very concerned about the future of our school system. I don't see any good answers. I really don't. I like this idea, thinking outside the box, but I'm here to say it's, I just, I wish I could come up with an idea, think of something, but we're going to have to do something pretty drastic. I just don't see how we can solve those three competing interests. We got to break out of this graveyard spiral.
Rob, remember that funding facilities, $18 million or whatever it is, is capital outlay. That is not ongoing current expense. And of course, the capital outlay has to come from some source, but we cannot fund large chunks of money for capital outlay. There's no way. We're not a taxing authority. So, yeah, we're in trouble money wise, but the money to resolve, a lot of that has to do with capital outlay. The second thing I want to throw out is, and Beth, you may not have the answer to this, but we closed Toller. We saved how much money roughly this year? That's not fair to you. Let's say we save $600,000 a year. We gave, we gave the commissioners our budget. And one of those was to pay the ongoing expenses and increases for staff. And we got half of what we need, what we had to have, no option to pay staff increases. So the net result is, we really didn't make anything because we had to pay it all in, you know. So, I mean, the point is, you can talk about, you can talk about saving money by doing X, but if Y doesn't go along with that, it's a wash.
Oh, I agree. In Toller, we had to spend three quarters of a million dollars on Stoveall Shaw and we lost students to Oxford Prep because of closing Toller, but we really didn't have a whole lot of choice. Mary Potter, I think we did the best we could do. It's an important historic part of this community in which I have a great deal of pride myself. But we didn't save really a whole lot of money because the facility is still there and still has its infrastructure needs. But it's doing great things for the community. We got Bance Bramble there, we got Bramble Academy, Phoenix Academy. It's going to be a great asset, but it didn't give us any money. And the problem is, I don't see how we get from A to B. And I just don't see, I don't see the commissioners having the money to give us. You know, I hope I'm wrong, but I think we have to, we have to work on the assumption that we're not going to get any more money from the county. So how do we cut costs?
We have to get money from the county or we can't do anything. We have to get, they are our, they're our source of local funds. If they don't give us any money, we can't do anything because we can't raise the millions of dollars ourselves. It's not, it's not possible. I mean, you know, we, we have to go to them. If they don't fund it, for whatever reason, that's their decision and we have to live with what we have.
I think we're there. I think we've got to live with what we have. Because with COVID and all that, I just can't see them raising taxes. And they don't have any money. They spend it.
So are we back to, that's why we're discussing closing the school is because we need the money? Is that where we are?
Yeah, we're broke.
But Mr. Rivers, for months or a year, you quoted the lab data of talking about empty classrooms. Dr. McKnight's solution fills those classrooms up. I mean, so is that not money savings right there that we've been talking about?
How does it fill the classrooms up?
If we're sending sixth graders back, that fills those classrooms. And if we keep Wilton still open so that that's filling their building to capacity, and then you're emptying out the part of the building that we're not going to use until it comes time. it comes time, does that not save something?
Well, it does save something, but if you look at the total number of elementary classrooms excess in the southern part of the county, we cannot close the school. We can put all of the 160, that's all the sixth graders that are at Holly, 160. You've got 192 excess capacity just at Wilton alone. Just Wilton could take all of the Holly sixth graders. And you still got four other southern elementary schools with tremendous excess capacity. So we still are going to have the 2.6 million penalty because we're going to have to be paying money for Holly, fixed costs. If we can't shed ourselves of the old part of Holly, which is what the Ops Committee recommended, we still have the money we've got to put into that. You know, if we can't somehow get rid of it until we can rebuild it, we still got to pay money. And that's part of the problem, 4.1 million if we keep the old part of Holly open. So when you start looking at the numbers and the money and the amount of money required, we just don't have it. We just don't have it. I don't, I mean, I've stayed awake night after night trying to figure out where can we get the money? And we've got to cut costs. There's positions, salaries, programs, and facilities. We've got to cut something and nobody wants to. And we haven't wanted to as a board for years and that's kind of why we are where we are today.
So if we redistribute our students, that's solving part of the problem, correct?
It's not giving us any more money.
If we redistribute our students, is that not saving us some money, just like what Mr. Richardson said?
We still have the same fixed costs. We just, it's a shell game. We're just moving people around. We still have 2,000 empty classrooms. Now, if we close down the old part of Holly, that's about maybe, what's that, maybe 300 Somewhere in that neighborhood? And we no longer have to pay any money for that building. Then we save fixed costs there. But if we demolish it, that's 675,000 minimum. If we don't demolish it and just close it, then we've got issues of the roof leaking and animal intrusion and safety issues and all that. You know, we're going to just have to roll up our sleeves, spend many, many hours and figure out what we're going to do, what our tough decision is going to be. But if we look at the numbers of money, we need 10 million for infrastructure. We need 2.6 million to make up for the 2.6 deficit we're going to have in the spring. That's 12.6 million. We don't have it.
Let me make, Ms. Chair, because we're going to go round and round. Rob, you know, I may believe some of what you say, but I may not, you know.
Sure, that's fine.
We need to make some decisions and we need to make them based on good information. I'd like to suggest that you appoint some kind of a committee to look at all of these schools and Mary Potter and see if we can come up with a recommendation that would be a win-win all the way around. For example, one thing, is it about the number of students, number of full classrooms? Or is it about the fact you have X more students, but you don't need a guidance counselor, you don't need another, that kind of thing? So it would really be helpful if we could get the real people, not a decision and not a recommendation, but what are we talking about? And what are our options? And ultimately, what would be a win-win? Just a suggestion.
All right. Before we do that, did we finish the activity you were walking us through?
So you will determine when you're, if you've accomplished what you needed to accomplish as a result of that?
Well, anybody can give a straight answer tonight.
Sorry. We went through that experience in order to articulate the reasons for a decision and then you guys have, you all as a board have extended that conversation.
Okay. If we're going to continue down this path, the next step is going to put us where we're going to be without knowing what we're going to do while we're there. I mean, does that make any sense? Because the next step or the process is for us based on hearing from the community. And we all know we will hear from the community pretty much. We've already heard, really.
So you've generated some additional ideas, some potential new solutions beyond the two solutions you had explored. So now you've got some new thinking. Some ideas around criteria are starting to emerge. It came out of here very clearly. Cost, location, ADM, programs, right? So where you want to take that, I will defer to you.
So Board, if I'm articulating correctly, we have a couple of decisions in front of us. We could choose a school tonight that we will continue the process with new studies and looking at what the staff have prepared. The next step in that process would be designating a school to do a public hearing on making a decision. I guess potentially you could move through that process with two schools as well. So that's choice number two. Choice number three could be that we pause. Sounds like we need more information, as you were saying, and there's lots of more consideration that if that pause would, if you decide that pause needs to take place, then perhaps we would appoint a committee that would get some of these in-depth answers that came out of some of the questions. Some of the questions we posed to the staff that we asked them also not to answer in this forum because it's not fair to them. Or option number four is we choose that we're not going to close either of these schools and we've stopped that part of the process, moving forward with the next thing on the table is Holly. So am I missing an option that maybe we have talked about before?
Could I ask Dr. Woodford a quick question to make a little? Dr. Woodford, if, let's say tomorrow, the HVAC unit at Wilton dies or HVAC at one of our other ones that's ended up service life, a million dollars, so a million point five, and then maybe bad luck, a roof fails at school X, where do we get the money to fix those?
We would need to go to the county commissioners.
Okay. And they say we have none and it comes out of fund balance, correct?
That's, that would be the worst decision.
Or we don't fix it. So if we, like when the children went out of Creedmore, we chose to fix it. If we chose not to fix it, we got to shut down Creedmore, I mean Crater. So that's where we are, Board. I mean, we have no money. If anything bad happens.
Rob, what is, it's not going to get us to where we are where we need to be.
Well, yes, and what I'm trying to do is say we've got to make a decision. We just don't have the time. Dr. McLean needs a decision by December in order to be ready for next year?
I think the last time we talked, absolutely dead bomb would be January, is that correct?
It would be fast, assuming.
Well, I just don't think we, I don't think we should make decisions because we're forced into doing something because of X, Y, or Z. I think it's a mistake. Can I make a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we do not close any schools this coming year pending a decision or direction regarding Holly and that the chair appoint a committee to come back with information that is comprehensive, accurate, and helpful for us to decide and discuss what to do around Holly.
Thank you.
Can I interject quickly?
No.
Who are you? You're not Eva. You're a bigger.
That's how long we've been sitting.
I'd say I'd make a, I'd second that as long as you put me on the committee.
Just to be clear, so I think you said that part of the motion is that no schools be closed this year. So you're saying that's not open to be revisited and that that's the final decision of the Board is that no schools will be closed or that that decision will be revisited once the committee forms and?
Now, my motion is that no school will be closed because, no school will be closed this year. It's going to take us a lot of time so, so with Holly.
So you would be saying that these schools would operate in '21, '22? Because no schools close this year and we're not going to take it up anymore in enough time for them to do anything for the next school to replace. Is that clear?
That's clear. About, you know, so we don't have to vote not to take action of the things that you concluded in your motion. The only thing that would require the Board's action is voting to create a committee.
Say that again.
So you don't have to vote to decide not to close a school.
Okay. So essentially, your motion would be to appoint a committee to further set. Do you get that change, Ms. Schaff?
I'll second that. As long as I'm not on the committee.
I'll be too immediate, boy, that works.
All right. So the motion made by Dr. Hullahan and Mr. Udi is to, for the chair to appoint a committee that would study further this issue as it relates in addition to the Holly decision. Is that clear?
That's clear.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. What discussion do you have?
I'm still back to my question of why. I think in order to come to a conclusion, you need to know why we're even talking about this. Are we talking about this to save money? Are we talking about this to fill our classroom? I think that's got to be the first thing is the why until the committee can do anything. I mean, that's my way of thinking.
Let me ask Ms. Day a question. Ms. Day, let's go ahead to March, April, May. We do know we're going to be another 2.7 million short. What happens? Does that, what do we do? Do we take another 60% cut to programs? What do we do? Put yourself now in May and say, "We have not done anything. Our expenses have remained the same."
Well, based on whatever our enrollment is and what our state dollars are, you know, what it looks like. You know, you said 2.7, whatever that number is.
Let's just say that just for pardon.
Whatever it might be short, then we would look at where that state money is coming from and we would have to reduce positions based on wherever that, we're losing that state money. The challenge is, you mentioned the 16% local cut to local budget is on the local side with our local dollars because a big portion of what our local dollars are spent on are facility costs, utilities, you know, operating our schools. So it does, it goes down to another percentage cut in programs.
In programs or positions or some, instance, we're not closing anything, it's programs or positions or salaries.
Because utilities, I mean, utilities and plant operations in local, but also the supplement that pay on local dollars. So those are the major portions of that local dollars. So it does limit where any other reductions would come from.
Ms. Udi has a question. I wanted to answer Ms. R. R. S. question. The reason we're here is because of the county commissioners, just bottom line. They came to us six years ago, and I'm going off the board, so I'll tell it like it is. They came to us six years ago and told us before they actively funded us anymore, we had to get our house into order. They said we had to cut personnel, and we did, and we're so lean now that we can barely get by. They said we had to close, merge, and sell schools. And this came from the county commissioners. It's also been reiterated within the last three years. Regardless of what they say, we're here doing this because of the county commissioners. They won't fund us. If we had the money, we could get our schools where they need to be, but they've not given us an adequate increase in the last 15 years.
So the purpose of closing the school is to?
Is all financial.
Okay.
It's all financial. We don't have the money. We can't keep the money.
I was going to ask you, Ms. R. R., the two questions that you have, are you, can you charge the committee to bring you answers to those two questions?
So that's what I'm liking.
Hey, that's a great idea.
State your question. State of salt that the chair can make sure that the committee here appoint knows what they, just what they are charged with.
The reason that a study of closing the school even has to be done or a discussion of closing the school has to be done, what is the purpose?
Okay. Any other discussion, Mr. Rivers?
I would really like to hear from Dr. McLean as to what she thinks it's going to do to her when we task her with improving performance. And that's what we're going to evaluate her on and that's what we have said is the most important thing. What does she feel if we take no action and we don't close the school this year?
I think that's unfair to ask her that. Especially because we're not setting the goals for the new year.
I guess what I'm trying to go with, we've got experts here who could at least give us some thought about whether we're putting them in a bad spot.
You're asking her to basically tell us something that could lead to a decision to do what she says. I just, well, and she's got, I just.
Yeah, we just disagree because she's.
No, we set up some. That was going to get her, get staff involved in this stuff.
There's a reason she's sitting over here tonight. And that is she don't leave me a part of this discussion of that, really.
How can you say that she is the one person?
I just said, that's how I see it.
Because the statute lays the responsibility with us.
I think that would be a trap question.
I mean, there are statutes that give her responsibilities and this is one of our
I just hate to have someone so bright and so capable and we can't take advantage of that.
Well, I think, and I think if I, you know, if I'm not mistaken, we've made a decision about next steps and it does not involve closing schools. And we can sit here and argue.
Pardon? We've not made a decision yet.
Well, we still do have to vote. Oh, we didn't vote yet?
I do think the attorney would probably call you back. All right. So is there any further discussion about the motion on the floor? So any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
All right. We will work on appointing that committee and we'll have information back with the, bring more information to you in a future board meeting. All right. Mr. Richardson.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
When you appoint the committee, it might be best to wait till December.
Yes, sir.
And then you'll have three new ones. And if you put one of those on, you'll have some fresh eyes and ideas to look at this solution.
Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Let the record show that involved you.
Yes, I got you. All right. There was no further business on our agenda tonight. Madam Superintendent, do you have anything else come up?
Mr. Richardson, nothing. You know, I'd just like to introduce the attorney who was here this evening. This is Ms. Tomlin Schiatt from Carrotton Smith. Attorney Dubson had to meet with another board this evening, so we're delighted to have your attorney here.
Pleasure to be with you all.
Anything first? Board members, you see there on your agenda, there's some dates to remember. We're starting to do this every Monday night thing, so we'll see you next Monday night for our regular November board meeting. Please remember some of the items that will be coming to you for that we will be voting on the District Three vacancy. We will also be in closed session discussing the superintendent's evaluation letter and that will start our conversation with our goals for the upcoming year. And so just be prepared to come ready to speak about that. So anything else from any other board member?
One left. One last thing, just to make sure. The discussion at one point was that we would not close a school this year. But when we, we didn't vote on that because it wasn't really because we couldn't. So I don't think that people should leave here thinking that we're going to close a school next year. I mean, that's way open.
The way the timeline is set, if we, we're appointing a committee this study, we're not going to do that until December. Superintendent says she needed an answer by Friday. I, I hope that people that are here and the public that are listening understand that point.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to thank the people that I heard from one of my sisters dead. I appreciate the cards and donations and this sort of stuff.
I was going to repeat the same thing. Three of us probably did say the same thing. On behalf of my family, I want to thank you for reaching out to me at the death of my father, Ms. Gudey.
And I'd like to thank all of you for your cards and your prayers. They really meant a lot in the passing of my mom. As David knows, it was something that we'd been expecting since August. So it gave us time to prepare and plan, but I do want to thank all of you.
Before we leave, Mr. Rivers, I just want to thank you for your time of service. I know your term is coming up to an end and just want to thank you on behalf of the board for that.
Thank you. Thank you. I wish you all the very best. I love our school system. I really do. I've been a contrarian sometimes, but it's only been because I really am concerned and I really want the best for Graham County schools. It's a, they will always be a great part of my life and my heart and you all have some tough decisions to make and I'll be praying for you and hoping and praying that you make the right decisions and a lot of, lot of tough challenges. So you'll be having my thoughts and prayers.
All right. With that, now have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All right. So I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?